This is the Wednesday meeting for February 28th. I would remind everybody to please silence your cellphones. Today, we have 16 items on our agenda, but before we actually get into those items, I'd like to take time for a little special recognition. We have a city employee who's leaving us, and so we're gonna, we're gonna bid farewell to Jacqueline. Mr. Mayor, you have a presentation to make, I believe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Janzer. Jacqueline, could you at least rise and come forward for a few minutes and see if I can get to ya? On behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your time here and the great services that you've provided to us in such a cheerful and professional manner. It's been a real pleasure to work with you, and I wish the city, I'm sure, wishes you nothing but the best as you move forward in your life and career. And as a token, I wanted to give you one of my coins.
They're about to become rare. Work with these people. They're about to become rare.
Oh.
Thank you. You know how that works. Thank you so much. You bet.
It's been my pleasure to work with the city and all the staff with all their support and guidance, and I respect and admire every one of you for the job you're doing for the city of Minot. So Friday at Bootleggers, 5 o'clock. A little get-together, but you'll be missed when we're in Japan. I'll think of you guys often and keep you updated on what we're doing, so.
Well, we'll be on the internet.
Yeah, I'll watch your guys' phone.
Okay, FaceTime, what, you know. Just one second. So I also have a coin to give you. I'm a member of the Chief of Staff Civic Leaders Group, and so we have a coin that we present to airmen. You know, you became a military spouse while you were here, and so in recognition of your service as a spouse and Rob's, I want to present you with our coin.
Oh, wow. Thank you. That's truly honor.
Mine's better.
It's not a mayor coin, though.
Yeah.
Thank you. Best wishes. Godspeed.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you all so very much. I'm so toast.
Okay, back to the 16 items. Item five, I'm told, has been withdrawn for today, and items 13 and 14 are informational, and item 15 is a discussion item. So I have been asked to pull items six, 10, 11, 12, and then we will, 15 and 16. So is there a consent motion on the remaining items?
Did you list 10 as well?
10 as well, pulled, yes.
Mr. President, I would move consent on the remaining items.
Thank you, Alderman Sitma. Is there a second? Seconded by Olson. Any, if there's anybody in the audience here about the items one through four, seven through nine, please, if you want to talk about those items individually, please let me know now, and we'll pull them for discussion. If not, they'll be passed with the recommendations that they came out with from the staff. Okay? Seeing no one, call the roll on the consent.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. That brings us to item number six, which is the Fire Department Training Officer Position. Is there a motion?
Second.
And seconded by Olson, okay. Moving seconded, discussion. Alderman Padraig Gula.
I wanted to ask the Fire Chief to provide some background on the shift of positions and explain that rationale, please, ma'am. Chief?
Yes, sir. President Janzer, Alderman Padraig Gula. So we, over the last six months, we've had a fire marshal position that is open. Also during that time, we've had a significant amount of retention issues during that time. We are down eight personnel right now, and also during that time, we've had a difficulty finding good candidates to look at for fire marshal. So when we sat down with HR and we looked at our issues, we, we need a lot of training in order to bring our young staff up to the, to the level that they need to be at in order to effectively perform their jobs. So we would like to take the monies that have been budgeted for fire marshal and to hire a training officer. This would be a lateral position on a two-year bid, that we could take a captain and move him over to that position for a two-year timeframe, which will allow us to have someone dedicated to training. Right now, that position is being filled under the Assistant Chief, and with our increase of personnel and our growth in the community, that position is really stretched. That position has also taken on a lot of the fire marshal duties, and so we'd like to fill the gap in training and allow just one person to take care of that, to be able to do the planning for that, to be able to take a lot of pressure off of the crews that are filling in in that role right now. What our plan is moving forward with the fire marshal, we still have a need for a fire marshal. We have identified an individual in town that could fill that gap after our Assistant Chief leaves in May, and during that time, we could take the remainder of the funding, and we're gonna be looking at this in a few weeks as we move forward, to potentially hire that person on a part-time basis, to be able to get us through to the end of the year, to continue to grow our, our office in the prevention side. They are very young, they're two-year inspectors, so we're, we're sending them to school and we're, we're working with them as much as we can, but this person could assist us in some of the code, code pieces that we're missing. And then as we move forward during budget time, we'll be relooking at what we're gonna do with the fire marshal.
Continue.
Makes a lot of sense to me. I think this is an important position. Obviously, your department is a very important department for the city, and I wanted the public and the rest of the council to be aware of that, and I accept your rationale. It makes a lot of sense. I'm also particularly pleased personally with the idea of a lateral move, if you will, making it a captain's position and having someone fill it for two years as the training officer position, and then moving them back into operations work. I think that really would be a very good way to groom personnel, to give them more experience, and yet not lose their expertise if they are a captain already in terms of what, what they're doing. So I'm particularly impressed with that, and I guess I'd like to see more of those kinds of career ladders, those innovative staffing arrangements, if possible, in other places, but I wanted to commend you for that publicly. It sounds like a really neat idea.
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions for the Fire Chief? Seeing none, thank you, Kelly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yep.
Barney?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Next is item number 10, which is the 2018 Street Patching Award of Bid. There was, this was a placeholder item. On our desk, we have item number 10. There is a staff recommendation to award the bid to Minot Paving, it looks like. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sitma?
Second.
Seconded by Straight. Discussion? Alderman Padraig Gula.
I wanted to ask the city manager to clarify briefly, because if I look at the thing correctly, we're being asked to approve a bid that's not the lowest bid, which is very interesting to me.
Mr. President and Alderman Padraig Gula, that's correct. Yesterday, you may have recalled me saying that in response to Alderman Wolfski's concerns regarding performance for various contractors, that we would be bringing something forward where we may be making this recommendation to have a bidder that wasn't necessarily the lowest in cost. That is what you see before you today, and let me just remind the council that when we award bids, we award not just on lowest responsive bid, but we also award on lowest responsible bidder. And with that second criteria, we are able then to take past practice and precedence and those sorts of things set by poor-performing contractors into account when we, when we award the bid. So that's what you see in front of you now.
When you look at the numbers on that, I'm impressed by the, well, I think the rationale is a very good one, and I'm impressed by the, the charting you've made of all the days behind this lowest bidder has been in their contracts and the many hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of liquidated damages that we've had to collect. I don't remember such a big amount entering into consideration the award of a bid previously, and I'm pleased with that. I think we need to hold people accountable, as Josh said yesterday. You know, we need to keep track of who's, who's a responsible contractor for us and who isn't, and if you don't get your work done on time repeatedly going back four or five years, that's the consequence. So I'm impressed, I'm pleased that you're recommending not the lowest bid.
Okay. Mayor Barney?
Thank you, Mr. Janzer. I share Alderman Padraig Gula's concerns with the, with the low bidder. However, $90,000 is a, a lot of money. Trying to think of an adjective, and one isn't coming to mind, and to send a message on the back of the taxpayers at $90,000 is, is, is out of my comfort zone. If, if this were a more competitive bid, I would have no trouble at all issuing it to the, the second highest bidder, but $90,000, what is that, what is that, three-quarters of a mil? That we're just gonna throw away to, to make a point. So for that reason and that reason only, I won't be supporting this motion, but I think that, I, I wish they were closer so that we could send the message that Alderman Padraig Gula is referring to, because I think the message needs to be sent, but, but not at that price. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Wolfski?
President Janzer, thank you. I agree with Mayor Barney. I agree with Alderman Padraig Gula. This is one of those situations where we have a very difficult choice. I, I do think it's important to acknowledge that, and I saw this email at about 3:30 walking in, and we did get a notice from Mr. Scott Knudtfig requesting that this be advanced to council without recommendation, because the folks from Keller were anxious to provide a response to this recommendation. I, I think at this point, I'm knowing, knowing that the action of this body today is simply the action of a committee. It is not a final decision. I'm willing to support this, but, but I will be anxious to hear what Mr. Knudtfig's response to, to this is on, on Monday night.
Okay. Alderman, oh, I'm sorry, City Manager?
That's okay.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the comments of the council, and certainly share the discomfort that the mayor does on this as well. It's not an easy decision to make. Maybe what may help somewhat is to just point out that the engineer's estimate for the project was $20,000 more than the actual bid that we received, and in addition, the, the third bid was an additional $30,000 above what this particular bid is that we're recommending for approval. So we are certainly below the highest bidder, we are certainly below the engineer's estimate. That doesn't negate the fact that it is a $90,000 discrepancy. I understand and agree with that, but at some point, we have to have accountability mechanisms to hold our contractors accountable. There are a lot of hidden costs that get buried into the low numbers, and if you look at the bid spread, you're looking at a spread here that, that's pretty significant and an outlier on the low bid. Those costs get make up, make, get made up in other ways, whether it be staff time, attorney's time, other sorts of outsourced attorney costs, those sorts of things come into play a little bit later. Those are a lot of times the things that you don't see as we close out projects and as we attempt to hold bidders accountable for the work that they've promised to perform on. So I don't know if that helps at all, but at least a little bit more context for the discussion.
Alderman Sitma?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I guess looking back to even the, the last round of bid openings on the flood control, using that as a comparison, there were a lot of those that were ballpark, for the most part, even going back to the lowest bidder on up. The, the issue I have here is such the gap between even our cost estimates for engineering to the lowest bidder, and then just coming back to the time when we talk about liquidated damages, going back to page two on what we have, it goes from a month to a week, a month, two months, four months. That's the impact to the community as well, and I think that's where it comes back to the responsible bidder. That's why I'm going to support going with the second lowest bid on this, based on all of the facts that are in front of me, but I will be looking forward to what's brought before us on Monday night as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I was just gonna comment on the, on the city manager's remarks that, yeah, it is below the engineer's estimate, but that's immaterial in my mind, because dollars to dollars is still $90,000 lower. And, you know, we've had plenty of times in the past where the, excuse me, especially during the oil boom, when we had engineer's estimates that were way low and we ended up taking higher bids, and there were no savings involved there. There were still more costs to the taxpayers, and $90,000 is just a lot of money, and I don't think you're gonna make that up with, with attorneys and, and all the elements that the city manager referenced, because those same things could happen with the, the second lowest bidder as well as the lowest bidder. So I'm, still don't intend to support this motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further, Alderman Straight?
Thank you, President Janzer. Can I ask, Mr. Berry, in terms of Keller as the contractor, I appreciated the spreadsheet. How difficult is it to collect the liquidated damages from them? I guess my, my point being that I appreciate the mayor's concern, and I think we all share that, that similar concern, but I'm also, on the other end, sure, folks can miss the deadlines, and then it's still, the residents are still left waiting and waiting. I recall the north side of Eastwood Park last year when Director Jonison had to work with the contractor after Mayor, and maybe it was two years ago, former Alderman Franz Vog, the contractor, just went bankrupt, and I'm curious, did we ever collect liquidated damages from them, similar to this case? I don't know. Just a point of clarification, I guess.
Mr. President and Alderman Straight, I can't answer the question as to whether or not we collected liquidated damages before my time, but I'm certain that one of the staff can. To answer the other question, or, or point, I guess, that you asked, you know, there, there are impacts associated with trying to collect on liquidated damages. Right now, the contractor that we're recommending against, we have $180,000 worth of liquidated damages we're trying to collect on right now, unsuccessfully at this point in time, which has weighed into our recommendation not to award to that particular contractor. Additionally, when you see an uncharacteristically low bid, my experience in public works is you want to be concerned about that, because typically, the cost differential gets made up in the form of change orders. Not always, but in many cases it does, and we do have that experience as well. Contractors will come in, they'll low bid, and then their next mode of operandi is to essentially continue with the change orders and bring the cost back up to what they believe the cost should be. And that's where good contracts, good accountability mechanisms, good performance bonds and those sorts of things play, you know, an important role in the way that we hold contractors accountable to the performance of the specifications and the plans.
Alderman Wolfski?
President Janzer, perhaps a question for our city manager or anybody else who can answer it, but I guess my understanding prior to just a few minutes ago was that when we have liquidated damages on a project, it is typically withheld from the final payment. Is, is, is that not correct? Do we actually have situations where we need to go pursue after the fact liquidated damages?
Mr. President and Alderman Wolfski, we're getting a little bit outside of my knowledge as it relates to cities' past practice, given my short tenure with the city. I might refer to that question, if with your permission, to our city engineer.
You bet.
Sure. Lance, can you help us with that?
Mr. President, Alderman Wolfski, the way that we ensure liquidated damages are paid is we withhold retainage on the contract until we know at the very end that the liquidated damages will be change ordered off the final amount. Once those change orders are signed, then we release final retainage. So we, we try to hold a balance there to make sure that all contract provisions are enforced.
City Manager, do you have a?
I have a question. Mr. President, I just have a question for Mr. Mayor. Is, to maybe satisfy Alderman Wolfski's question, is it possible that the retainage we withhold on final payment is less than the amount of the liquidated damages?
Mr. President, Mr. City Manager, that could be a potential case. Typically, we try to get that addressed before we'd be in that situation, but it could happen.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Barney?
I'm gonna need a clarification here. The, the city manager just said that we are in the process of trying to collect from this particular business, but yesterday, we approved final payments in the amount of $183,796 to the same business. Can somebody clarify that for me?
Mr. President and Mr. Mayor, we have to look at each one of these contracts as, as separate entities. So in that contract, to fulfill those terms, we reduced the project costs with the amount of liquidated damages, and then we had to make final payment for work achieved. The project that's in question is our downtown project right now, and we're working with, with the contractor to come to an agreement on days assessed for liquidated damages. I, I think we're going to be able to do that from, from what I've been told, but we have to look at each one different. We can't, we can't withhold money on something over here on this contract until this one is, is satisfied.
Lance, so the, the downtown reconstruction phase two, is that the one that you're referring to where the, the agreement is still being worked on?
Correct.
Okay. And so that was a 2016 project? Okay. Further question? Alderman Straight?
Thank you, President Janzer. Just as a follow-up, Lance, so if we get into a situation where it's determined number of days for liquidated damages and the business is then on the clock for payment, do we have, this is gonna come up later, thanks to, I think, Alderman Padraig Gula, is there a late fee schedule in place then for, if they don't start making the, the payments on time?
Mr. President, Alderman Straight, if I understand your question, the way that we would charge liquidated damages is, once the substantial completion date happens, let's say it's August 1st, the day after the clock starts ticking for them to complete the work within the scope, and so if that takes them 30 days, we would charge them 30 days. Once they meet this substantial completion time, the, the clock stops, and then, let's say there's a $30,000 balance in liquidated damages, we withhold that payment, or that $30,000 from their next progress payment, so what we would owe them for doing that work?
Okay.
And we don't pay that until final contract time, which is why the liquidated damages hit the, the final payment on the one that we dealt with yesterday.
Perfect.
That makes sense?
Yeah, that's, that's clarity of, back to the mayor's point, so thank you for that.
Okay. Further questions for the city engineer or, okay, seeing none? Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Alderman Padraig Gula?
Two points. I share the mayor's concern about finances. I was painfully reminded of that just a few minutes ago when I asked the city clerk for another pad of paper. When constituents call, when I write down comments I wanna make, you know, it'd kinda be nice if I could use city paper. We don't have any paper. Shouldn't have the money to buy pads of paper. So obviously, we're, we're doing what we can to, to save money, and I'm gonna use my own paper from now on. I gave her the pad that her assistant gave me, 'cause she needs it more than I do. It wasn't even a complete full pad, so Kelly, I think we're reminded of that constantly, how we're trying to save money, and I understand $90,000 is a lot of money. The other comment I'd make would be that when contractors are late, it isn't just a matter of money, it's a matter of inconvenience for the city and its citizens. I look at one of the projects that the lowest bidder was late on was downtown reconstruction. They were late 79 days. That's a lot of inconvenience for the people who shop, live, do business downtown. That's two and a half months they're late. Things are dug up, there's mud. Another project was, I think, even worse. They were 123 days late at the intersection of 36th Avenue Northwest and North Broadway. That North Broadway is one of the busiest streets in the city. A great number of people use that to commute to the airbase and back. SRT is at that intersection. It was a real pain for them to get their vehicles in and out. I remember several times I went up to try to pay my phone bill in person, and I had to hike quite a ways and drive around, because it was completely impassable. Even as a pedestrian, you couldn't get across that intersection. So I think there are these hidden costs. It isn't just a matter of, of dollars for the city. It's a lot of inconvenience for citizens. Intersections are clogged up, there are safety issues, there's inconvenience for all sorts of people who, again, who live, work, commute, do business, and they're impacted by these projects. So I, believe me, I recognize that it's 90,000 bucks. I wish we could, you know, save more of that, but I just can't at this point, and maybe we'll reconsider when we hear from the attorney on Monday night for the party. I just can't at this point go ahead with the lowest bidder, because there are other costs involved too, and we, I, I think it's, it's important to send the message, you need to follow through.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, it's time to vote. Call the roll.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Barney?
No.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. That brings us to item number 11, which is the Award of the Street Seal District Bid. Is there a motion? Alderman Straight? Mr. President, move. Move the recommendation? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Sitma. For those of you in the audience, the, the recommendation is to award the bid to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation for $937,596.40. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Sitma?
A question possibly for Lance, if I could. Lance, on the, the map within the packet on unit number six, it's showing sections of 18th Avenue Southeast being part of this project. Is that the part that we just replaced for water and, or for sewer with some water?
Is that the part that we just replaced for water or for sewer with some water on our last big project last summer?
Mr. President, Alderman Sitma, yeah, 18th Avenue Southwest, correct. So...
For southwest.
Yep. The way that we staged this project is as soon as the paving contractor is finishing putting the top lift of asphalt on, this project would come and seal not only that street, but then the entire neighborhood. So we've set up that work so that we're not having a patchwork of sealed streets and not sealed streets. It's done in a way so it's methodical.
One follow-up.
Certainly.
Lance, they're not doing any milling on it, it's just the seal on it for that section?
Mr. President and Alderman Sitma, we still have one lift of asphalt to put on about a two-block stretch from Broadway over to Sixth Street. Once that top lift is on, and then the pavement will be up to grade, just like any other street, and then we'll come in and seal it.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Wolfski. Yeah. Question for Mr. Meyer. Lance, a couple neighborhoods here, maybe even three, unit two, unit four, unit one. These are newer neighborhoods. This is the southeast part of town, out to the north and east of the airport, and then I think the Bolton Heights. These are relatively new developments, neighborhoods. I'm just curious, what is the regular maintenance on these new roads? I mean, is this, are we at the expected point to have to do this? Are these roads holding up the way we expected them to?
Mr. President and Alderman Wolfski, this gets into a little bit of pavement management discussion, but in general, most of these neighborhoods are in reality five-plus years old. In some neighborhoods, we're probably about three to four years beyond where we should be in sealing them. The industry standard is try to get every street sealed within five years of its asphalt. Our average is about 18 to 20, which is actually the expected design life of the roadway. We're trying to change that dynamic so that we get these streets sealed first before we lose them. In Minot, because of our weather, what I've found is typically, we start to have weathering problems on that surface after about year three. So if we try to hit a five-year cycle, we may be just a hair beyond what our climate is saying that we should seal these, but I would feel comfortable trying to get on a five-year rotation.
So we're trying to get to five years, but we're not quite there yet.
We're a long ways from there, yes.
Long ways from there. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for the city engineer?
Just to make sure I heard this straight. We reseal the average street every 18 to 20 years.
Correct.
And industry standards, your professional standards, which suggests this should be done how often?
Recommended five.
Five years. So you at least want to do the new ones right away so they don't deteriorate?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Barney.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number 12, the 2018 sidewalk curb and gutter bid award. We have a recommendation for that, is there a motion? So move with staff recommendations. Moved by Sitma.
Second.
Seconded by Straight. Discussion. Alderman Wolfski. President Janser, just for the sake of everybody in the audience, this is a very similar situation to our previous agenda item number 10, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but the staff recommendation is to go with a responsible bidder that is not the lowest bidder. So... Further discussion? Question? Alderman Straight.
Thank you, President Janser. I guess I'm going to maybe make my comments a little more stern on Monday night, but I appreciate the direction that we're moving, and these are tough conversations to have, but I think all of us, we take a tremendous amount of criticism on a regular basis about various city issues, and I appreciate that we're pushing back now, and we are no longer going to be anybody's bank or the punching bag, and the time has come. And so I appreciate the staff's work on this, and these are tough conversations to have to have, especially because, you know, we're trying to tighten our belt, and so I look forward to all of your comments, hopefully on Monday night, to some of the same frustrations that you've all felt, and so, thank you, President Janser.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Sitma.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Barney.
No.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. That brings us to item 13, which is an informational item, some information on outdoor ice skating. Scott, can you fill us in?
Yeah. President Janser, Mayor Barney, and the council, Alderman Wolfski asked me to do just a quick rundown on what we do for our outdoor skating program. So I'll just go through the, a few slides real quick here. Our goals of our Minute Recreation Outdoor Skating Program, to offer skating to the community free of charge, offer multiple locations to maximize use of all city areas. There's basically four sites that we go to right now, and there are six different rinks. They all have warming houses to give the kids and the users safe environment with supervisors who oversee everything. We work within a budget that maximizes cost versus participant, and we work in partnership with the Minute Park District to ensure that there's no duplication of services. The operation of the outdoor rinks is done in a partnership, like I said, with Minute Park District. The Minute Recreation is in charge of staffing and scheduling the warming houses, paying for supervisors, heat, water, and electricity. The Minute Park District is in charge of all the maintenance, cleaning and flooding of all the rinks. Schedule is as follows. December 15th through February 15th is usually the timeframe that we are budgeted for. You can see there where we're open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 4:00 to 9:30 during the weekdays, 2:00 to 9:30 on Saturday and Sunday, and then we're closed Wednesday. And that's always been the idea, to follow the church schedule throughout the years. We holiday schedule when the kids are out of school and for Christmas break, we do open at 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. every day during Christmas, and then 2:00 to 5:00 on New Year's Eve, we are closed Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. The budget, there's approximately about $24,000 budgeted roughly each year for the outdoor rinks. Supervisors make up about 16.5 of that, water, electricity, natural gas, roughly 7,500. The city of Minot also transfers, we like you know, 15,000 through the recreation budget to the offset the cost at the All Seasons Arena. This amount, we just lowered last year for the next year's budget cycle, and that basically gives us about 35 days, roughly 70 extra hours of free skating out at the All Seasons Arena that we include in our program. The usage, the four rinks have a combined average of about 1,900 users a month, so that is an average. That isn't saying that each rink has, you know, break it down by four, by four rinks, but there are some that are used more than others. We have closed some over the years because of not being used enough. We've tried to keep certain areas of the city open because of those are the types of areas in the city where the kids seem to not have a place or the means to get to the All Seasons Arena or the Mesa Arena, so there's always skating in some, a safe warming house for them. The number fluctuates, obviously, whether we shorten or extend our season. This year, we didn't get started until I believe it was right before Christmas with the rinks because the weather was too warm to make the ice. However, we have extended the season, and as of today, we're still going to try to go through the weekend. Weather permitting, there are some, there are some rough areas on our pleasure rinks right now as we speak, but the hockey rinks are all in pretty good shape as of today now. That ice tends to be a little thicker than the pleasure rinks because we have to build it up to get it up on a certain height on the boards. And then I just got some pictures. This is the one city-owned rink that we have over at Perkett. This is the newest rink that we have. This is the one that was over at Longfellow School when it was flooded during the 2011 flood, when they built the facility for the portable housing, or the portable schools, I should say. We had to move it, and we found this place over at Perkett. This is the park district-owned skating rink over at Roosevelt School. You can see that there's a small pleasure rink on the left there and the main hockey rink on the right. Another park district owned up at Polaris Park, a couple pictures of the, of the pleasure rink and the hockey rink, and then the park district owned one pleasure rink down at Municipal. This was originally one of the rinks that we closed down. There used to be boards up at this rink, and there was also a small little skating pleasure area. When that closed down, the park district pulled the boards off there, and then after the flood, when they revamped that building, we decided to open it back up as a pleasure rink and include it in our skating program again. So that's basically all I have, and I'll be willing to take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for... Alderman Wolfski. President Janser, like Scott mentioned at the front here, I had requested this presentation, and Scott, thank you very much. I mostly wanted all of you to get up to speed on the fact that we provide the service that we provided in conjunction with the park district. You know, they, they look after the ice, they maintain the ice, we take care of the warming houses and the operation of the warming houses. And I've got some ideas that may allow us to add the Wednesday nights to the equation. I think that's one area where I would like to see us, you know, maybe continue to make that, those warming houses open and available around the year because it is such a short season, and to automatically, or to eliminate that night, you know, we're eliminating opportunity. But, but obviously, that's very much a budget question. And so from here, I'm going to, I'm going to sit down with Scott and talk about some ideas and see what we can come up with, and maybe we'll bring something back to you. But before that happened, I just wanted you to be up to speed on the fact that we're doing this. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Chairman Janser. Scott, can you remind us of when we discussed the budget for the sheet of ice at the All Seasons? I feel like it's middle of the year, it's not during our standard budgetary. Am I wrong in that thinking, or...
Alderman, Janser, Alderman Straight, that, you're right. That is, we're basically a year behind. So what was budgeted in 2017 pays for the 2018 ice. What we just budgeted in 2018 pays for the 2018, 19, and it's basically when the ice goes in at the All Seasons Arena. So it's kind of halfway through the season, yes.
Okay. I guess, President Janser, if I may, just for a follow-up, I'm going to be a little more direct when we get into that timeframe of what we might need from the All Seasons Arena in terms of some upgrades to try to lure some of the bigger tournaments because we have this fantastic Mesa facility. But Alderman Wolfski, I appreciate you bringing it up, and Scott, you educating me on this because I wasn't as aware, but I think we're also trying to put together a larger Winterfest concept in conjunction with we, I guess I'm going to speak just for a second about the Friends of the Surfs. The Canadians have invented this new game called Kronk and Curl. It's similar to curling, but maybe we can have a discussion at some point. I'll bring it forward of, maybe we could turn Municipal or one of these outdoor rinks into a curling rink or something a little different than just standard ice skating. I can't ice skate myself, it's frightening to watch, but I think that we could probably create something that can be a little more appealing to those that don't skate but want to do something, and it's a budget issue, I get it, but I'm going to propose some of that to you over the coming days as a result of this because it just dawned on me. So, thank you.
Okay. Any... Alderman Padrigula.
Wanted to thank Josh for asking for this report and wanted to thank Scott for presenting it. I think this is a good example of how the park board and the Recreation Commission work together. Perhaps one day, they can be one entity, but for right now, I think we're doing a pretty good job. And I also wanted to thank you, Scott. This past year, you took me around to the auditorium, and you took me around to all the rinks, and I was impressed, there are facilities there I didn't realize existed. And I think we're doing a good job there, so I wanted to thank you again for spending that afternoon with me and carting me around, showing me the different places. I was impressed too how some of them were, some of the rinks were in places where, you know, you wouldn't expect them, and clearly served a significant function for the neighborhood, particularly neighborhoods who are far from Mesa. So, good job.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Scott, appreciate the report. Item 14 is a update on the flood protection plans. Who's, Dan, is that you? I was going to try to say that acronym, but it doesn't seem like it's pronounceable. It needs more vowels or something. I mean, I don't know how we came up with that, but, you know...
President Janser, members of the committee, I just wanted to provide that update for you. I'm trying to provide it monthly so you can keep up to date as to what's happening on the Moss River Enhanced Flood Protection Project, or MREFPP. One thing I just want to make sure and draw your attention to in the information that I submitted is to make sure you save the date, March 28th at 1:30 p.m. at 16th Street and Forest Road, just north of the water plant. We will be having the groundbreaking ceremonies for the first three phases of the flood protection project. If there's a snowstorm, our alternate location is the auditorium, but one way or another, we'll break ground on the flood protection.
I think if there's a snowstorm, people, some people would be glad of the moisture.
Any questions for Dan Alderman Wolfski? President Janser, Dan, just thanks for providing this update on a monthly basis. This is such a significant issue for the community that I think it's important that we see regular detailed information on that, and I appreciate having it. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further? Okay. Thank you, Dan. All right. That brings us to item 15, which is the landfill use financial arrangements for private contractors. Alderman Padrigula.
I'd like to move that and the three motions that are appended or are part of the agenda. And I also would like to add a fourth one at the request of the Finance Director. So the three motions I'm proposing, a three-part motion, excuse me, four-part motion. First, that the city staff develop formal policies and procedures for commercial uses of the city landfill to include a formal contract. This would be pending development of a franchise arrangement, which the city manager has proposed, and I think is a good idea, but that will take some time. Second part of the motion would be that effective April 1st, the city will impose a monthly interest charge of 1.75% on any commercial landfill accounts that are over 30 days due. The third part of the motion would be that effective April 1st, the city will terminate commercial landfill use privileges on any accounts over 60 days due, and the reinstatement of privileges will require full payment of all monies due to the city. And fourth, that we approve a 1.75% monthly finance charge for all unpaid city accounts. This is at the suggestion of the Finance Director. He felt that we should have a uniform policy of charging interest on people who owe us money wherever it might be.
Second. Seconded by the mayor. Discussion. City Finance Director is approaching.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, just a few items of clarification. There are some accounts that we are not able to charge finance charges to, the federal government, state in North Dakota, some of those types of things, and there may be some accounts that we may have terms through some type of contract that the payment terms may vary. So I guess I would like a little bit of latitude in crafting the ordinance change to allow for that, and it may just be the language, the past due terminology that can accomplish that, and we still haven't tested some of this stuff in our computer system, so we may potentially run into some, some issues there as well. But I just wanted to, through the addendum, bring it to everyone's attention that I don't think that this is just a landfill-specific issue, that if we are going to go down this path, we should make it a citywide policy.
So maybe require the language in terms of where applicable or...
Relatively permissible.
Where permissible or something like that. Maybe the city attorney will figure out what that needs to be, I suppose. Okay? Alderman Padrigula.
And I apologize for speaking for you. I thought I saw you leave the room. I'm sorry, I wouldn't have, didn't mean to usurp your discretion here, and sorry about that.
You're fine. Okay. Public Works Director, Jomason.
Mr. President, members of the committee, I hope you will, I guess, give some thought to one of the items that Alderman Padrigula talked about in creating contracts with all haulers. Keep in mind, on any given month, we have accounts with anywhere from 350 to 700 different entities. So that means we would have to come up and sign and deal with hundreds of contracts to try to get with these haulers and... And it's going to be a lot of, I guess, labor-intensive work for us to, want first of all, to come up with a contract, but also to get it with all these haulers. You know, and any given week, we'll have one or two different people that come in and fill out a, an application with us. We have a form in order to farm, charge at the landfill. But any given week, I'm approving one or two every week for different entities to charge. So I just hope you'll give that consideration because that is going to add a lot of work to some of my yells out there.
Just question, Dan. So are, are all of those what, you know, I guess, what we would call commercial haulers?
Mr. President, yes. Pretty much any individual entity that comes out to the landfill, you know, single users, you know, if they're not a business, they'll pay with credit card or cash. But all of the accounts we have and I, my administrative people did a printout for me, just the active ones that we have in the winter, when it's a lot slower, there's 345 accounts that we deal with on a monthly basis. Like I said, in the summertime, those active accounts, right now, the total active accounts we have is almost 700.
Okay, just another question. So are there, obviously they're of different sizes or they produce different volume? I mean, is it sort of an 80/20 rule where, you know, you've got 20% of them that are producing the largest volume of dollar?
Mr. President?
These or?
There's probably a dozen haulers that make up 90% of the income at our landfill. You know, the major ones, I'm gonna say, for example, Circle, BMAC, North Coast Sanitation, some of the, I guess, the larger MSW haulers, some of the cities that haul their MSW to us. But, you know, we have a lot of contractors that when there's demolition going on all around town or at the base, that get these contracts. Yard service companies, tree trimming businesses. So it's, it's a very, I guess, vast amount of businesses that are using this.
Sure. I guess, you know, with all, you know, with all understanding for, for the, the motion or the suggested motion, I guess, I, you know, to me, you'd obviously want to start with where the largest money is that's involved and, you know, obviously treating everybody equally, but maybe we have to make some sort of a stipulation there. Alderman Padrigula?
Thank you. My intent here was not to give you the work of having to draw up, you know, five-page contracts. I point out that we approved yesterday a four-page contract for $650 a month for advertising on a bus. We have a standard contract. And I very much agree, and if we're talking about hundreds or tens of thousands of dollars, I think we do need a contract. I agree very much with Alderman Janser that I don't think we need to have a formal thing, you know, 20 pages or anything with most of these. And I would trust your judgment, you know, to decide at what point we need something more specific. To me, a contract is a one-page sheet of paper that says, I agree to pay the city and I agree to abide by the rules. That's all I mean by a contract, for the average hauler, for the average, you know, lawn service or whatever. And my intent was not to impose any extra work or any formidable kind of procedures. That's what I intended when I said contract, a piece of paper that says I'm gonna abide by the rules, because all of us as citizens have to do that. We have, every year, we're issued a list of sanitation policies. We can't put batteries and stuff in, in the trash, things like that. I want that, you know, people to sign something like that too. And then, you know, as the city administration, you know, becomes more, I guess, involved in this, then I think for the larger ones, you know, I think we probably need to be looking at something more elaborate. But again, we have a four-page boilerplate contract for people who advertise on our buses and I don't think it would be that time-consuming. So for right now, what I'm looking at is a piece of paper that says, I agree to pay you and I agree to abide by the rules. And that's the contract as I see it.
Mayor Barney? I'm gonna follow up on Alderman Padrigula's comments and maybe be a little more specific. If we're going through the exercise of establishing credit for people, we certainly can add lines in there about what happens if they aren't good with the credit. And I don't know that we need to go much beyond that. And that does not add to your workload and it falls in line. So all you need to do is modify it and that needs to happen. If we are offering credit with a taxpayer's money, then we need to have the opportunity of getting that back with some interest because that's the only way that they're going to follow it. So I, I'm not buying this contract stuff. It can be on what you're doing now with your credit application and have it be part of the agreement between the city and them and establishing credit.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe for the, for the council, what we could do as a staff is go back and develop a payment agreement that is uniform for all of these various arrangements that includes some of the consequences for failure to pay and the interest and all of these kinds of things and create essentially a perpetual contract that could be terminated by the city with a 30-day notice clause, provided that there is something that maybe instigates that, like a failure to pay over a certain period of time. We can work out those details and bring that back to you. I do want to be sensitive to Mr. Jonison and his staff as it relates to administering this kind of thing. So if we can put something in place that is perpetual, that does allow us to, to have the flexibility, but also the teeth that we need in order to preserve the city's rights and interests in regards to collection, I think that would be advisable. With that, we may need to have the city council essentially bequeath the contracting arrangement or signature with public work staff so that we don't have to bring every single one of those to the city council. There's a way, I believe, that we can work that in, in either ordinance or in the, in the contract itself or somehow if you would enable staff to enter those simple payment agreements, much like we do in the Finance Department right now when we have a payment agreement for somebody who has a large bill and need a certain period of time to pay. We administer those, so I'm looking at something like that here to try to eliminate the administrative burden on the staff and that of the council as well.
That again is part of my intent.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we do similar things with administrative approval of, you know, liquor stuff and whatnot. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dan. One second, Alderman Wolfski. Did we get a, do we have a motion? Okay, we got a motion, a second. Okay, all right. Alderman Wolfski?
I just wanted to thank Alderman Padrigula for his continued work on this since this issue kind of came before us a few months ago. He's been very aggressive and relentless in pursuing the path and, and the motion that's in front of us today and I, I'm grateful for it. I appreciate it and, because I think this is an important step that we need to take.
Thanks.
I would concur. Further discussion? City Attorney?
I'm just looking for some clarification on, I believe there are four prongs to your motion.
Yes, ma'am.
And the last was approving a 1.75 monthly charge on all unpaid accounts with the city. Could you just elaborate again what that specific motion was and if you have any deadline for implementation?
I think that was something the Finance Director requested. I guess I would want to leave him some latitude. I guess basically, as I understand it, we bill people, we give them 30 days to pay the bill and the intent would be to charge them 1.75% on top of that if, when they don't pay.
Mr. President, Alderman Padrigula, my intent with this addendum was to adopt policy that was uniform citywide. And maybe what I would ask for is, this is essentially a policy that we would adopt and try and make that as specific as possible within the parameters that we have capabilities to administer that and bring that policy back to the council for approval.
That's exactly what I would intend.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, does that help? A little bit, maybe?
Yes, it does. As I understand it, so items one and four of your motion will be referred back to city staff to begin developing the formal policies and procedures and develop a recommendation. And then two and three, is the intent that those would be advanced to the council?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wolfski, do you have something?
I would like to add one thing and obviously this will be pending action on Monday night because again, this will just be a recommendation at this point. But should this pass on Monday night, I think it will be important that we, that we reach out to, in particular, all those contractors that this is going to affect over the next 30 days and give them a notification.
Anything further? All right, call the roll, please.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Sipma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Item 16 is the census tract for the Opportunity Zone designations, their motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sipma?
Second.
Seconded by Barney. Discussion. Mayor Barney?
I pulled this item just because I had a question for Mr. Zakian and it maybe was in the information and I just didn't see it, but I was trying to determine what, what the benefit is to those people and is it, you know, I mean, some kind of tax for tax for goodness at a federal level or what is it exactly that they gain by participating in, in this designation?
Mr. Zakian?
President Janser, Mayor Barney, good question. This is a new program. It's literally two months old. It was kind of snuck into the Tax Reform Act that was passed. So a lot of the nitty-gritty details have not yet been promulgated. In fact, one of the expectations was that the U.S. Treasury Department would have the rules and regulations in draft form posted on the federal register site, which is the public site, to give an indication of the full range of opportunities and benefits. That has not happened. But the reason it is before you is because there is a drop dead deadline in the statute that the governors of each of the 50 states has to submit eligible census tracts to the U.S. Treasury Department for the secretary to determine those that will be designated as eligible by March 21st. With that prelude, yes, the intent of this legislation is that in the census tracts that have a population that is 51% low and moderate income, that any new investments by the private sector that results in new development or redevelopment that is a significant capital investment in that census tract will get a multiple set of tax benefits in the form of either corporate, financial or personal federal taxes.
Okay.
And that's the incentive. And coincidentally, as I showed you with the census tract map, the value for us is that it encompasses our entire downtown.
Okay. Alderman Sipma?
Thank you, President Janser. Mr. Zakian, I just can't help but think too that it also encompasses an area within the next three years where five blocks will potentially be vacated for redevelopment downtown as well.
Yes.
Not so much a question, but a comment.
Alderman Wolfski?
President Janser, thanks. Mr. Zakian, I'm looking at the map here and there are some, some zigs and zags and some jogs and things like that. Is, is there a specific rhyme and reason to, to the way this map was drawn or was it kind of a best guess at what encompasses downtown?
This map, that's the census tract map. This is done by the U.S. Census Bureau. It was done?
Gotcha.
60 years ago.
Okay.
And no, I could not give you the rhyme or reason as to why it's zigs and zags. It's the federal government.
Okay, I understand that. Perfectly understandable. Alderman straight.
Thank you, President Janser. Mr. Zakian, the letter that accompanied your, this project from Ann My James says that in the coming weeks, you're going to receive some additional information from the Department of the Treasury. And I would like to read that when it comes your way.
Absolutely, I'll forward it to all of you.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Actually, it should be next week.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Sipma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Without further business, we're adjourned.[1754.51]